... invisible with the routine justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to our December 5 meeting. Please note the council's in full attendance. The first item on our agenda is items from council. I have a handful, but you guys want to go first?
Can I pull D2?
D2?
Yes.
You know, I was actually gonna ask him to come up under citizens' comments and speak, but we can do that. I kind of thought, because I want to hear from him, so.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll pull D2. Where are you at? We'll just wait till we get to that item.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else, council?
I just want to make a quick comment. We used to do, what is it, lighting in the square or something, the program that they did Friday night.
Uh huh.
Are we not going to continue to do that? Or did we pass that over to Main Street program?
Main Street did it this year.
Can we do it next year? Would it be possible?
Well, if that's council's wishes, yes, we can. It's just Parks is, you know, has a lot of other activities going on.
Okay, for this year, I understand.
And but with the parade on Saturday night, it's a lot of work for Parks to do those two events back to back. But if that's what council wishes, then we will plan on doing it next year.
It just seemed like they had a lot more participation when the parks did it, because you know, y'all had the, what do you call it? The hayride and, you know, with Dana, with the library, she did a lot of work there too. And I know everybody else participated. It just was so much more fun. And I thought, you know, that would bring it a little bit more into the festive mode. I know it's a lot of work, but, you know, I think people would enjoy it more.
Sure. And then there's a cost to it, too.
I realize that.
We'll work on. And then maybe it's a joint effort with us and Main Street, too.
Yes.
Does it have to be back to back? Not necessarily. Downtown, you start getting those events, like this coming weekend, you've got Nutcracker that's going on. So you start getting those events, but no, not necessarily. We can relook at everything.
Possibly the Saturday after Thanksgiving, since that's right before, you know, because we don't ever have the parade until December. So it's just to get downtown a little bit more festive.
When you get the budget for next year, we can just.
Oh, yes, definitely. Okay.
Sure.
I don't think it'll take that much to put it together.
No, no, no. It's more time, set time than it is actual hard dollars out.
Okay. Well, thank you. And thank you for everybody that did the parade. Thank you, guys. It was wonderful.
The Long Term Care Recovery Group or Committee, I know you guys are familiar with that. And by the way, there's some thank yous letters being circulated. I think they're over here. We did have some private individuals from around the country send a few checks in. It was very generous, very touching. Sometimes small, 20, 30 bucks here and there. We decided to give that to the Long Term Care Recovery Group to dispose or dispense. And there's thank you notes we're going to send to those people. But also, they are, have an issue with when they're helping with a resident with debris removal, which this could go on for like a year. And they have asked us if we would waive the pickup fee. We'll pick it up when they call to schedule a pickup. I don't have any idea how many pickups that'll be. Talking with staff, we recommend maybe a one-year timeframe, and then council can, whoever's here in a year can renew it at that time. But they would have to be vetted by the recovery group and recommended by them. So, because they have caseworkers in different groups, and they're working these cases. So if they contact us and say, we're doing this house here, and there's debris, we all pick that up and waive that fee. I don't, do we have any idea how many it could be?
We don't, no. We've asked, but I don't think they know with the volunteer groups that are in working on homes.
I do think it should be just one year.
What do you mean by debris?
Well, as I understand it, if they're going to go in, and they're private money. That's all the donations that went to them. You know, we gave them the $6,000 from the GoFundMe account, and there's a lot of other. They're going to go and help someone repair. So when they bring out whatever, and I know it's been two months, a lot of us are thinking a lot of that's been done, but it hasn't. And they stack it next to the curb, whatever that debris is, construction materials or whatnot, just a debris pickup like we ordinarily do now. If it's out of cycle, we charge, right? So there's Daryl. That's the fee they don't want to, they want enough we'll waive it, so.
And John's been at those meetings. He can probably talk a little bit about what they're seeing.
Primary, we are talking about work being done by volunteer groups. These are not contractors. Contractors do the work. They're required to haul it off. But these volunteer groups, in some cases, don't have the trucks and trailers to haul the stuff off or the resources to pay for those additional costs. It's, there are still homes that are being mucked out that had roof damage and then water damage inside by these volunteers. They're being worked on by these volunteer, mostly church groups. They, there are also cases still today where some of these homes have trees still down in the yards, some leaning still against homes that need to be removed, and those volunteers are doing that as well. Now they're finding that, now that we're finished with our contract, or finishing up with our contractor, they're going to have to pay to have that stuff hauled off, and that's becoming a concern of the Long Term Recovery Group. And that's why we recommend that we only extend this to cases that are referred to us by the Long Term Recovery Group.
Is this an amendment to an ordinance?
Yes, we would bring one back on the 19th to amend the fees.
We'd bring a fee waiver ordinance like we've done before.
Okay.
And we have the equipment to pick up all this type of debris?
Yeah, it's hard.
Because typically on a construction site, I'd see a dumpster that everything gets piled in and then gets taken away. So the claw will pick up everything?
That's what we anticipate, Jeff. I mean, if we run into some extraordinary circumstances. We've worked, I know they had one house that they worked with getting a roll-off at the house, the Unmet Needs Group did. So I think it's just going to be a case by case, and us having a clear understanding with the Long Term Recovery Group, what we're capable of doing, so.
I forwarded Thomas this afternoon. It's preliminary work, some guidelines. You know, we're not gonna, we can't pick up things that are 12, 15 feet long like the contractor could. So we're looking at eight feet long, two foot in diameter. You know, so we've, we've got some guidelines of where it would have to be placed, how it would have to be put out, when we would come get it, scheduling, those types of things that I forwarded to John and Thomas today that we hope to write in there to make sure that it's done in a way that we can pick it up. Could there be some things we can't? There could be, and that would have to be handled on case by case, as the city manager said.
Ms. Stokes has been very good with working with us and understanding what our limitations are. So I think they'll continue to do that.
Okay.
Is there any distinction between stuff that's pulled out versus, I don't know what it's called, but just as the construction job continues, that also creates debris? Are we looking at both of those? Is there a distinction between them?
I'm not aware enough to know exactly what kind of work they're doing, other than I know that they'll be clearing some trees. I've talked to Ms. Stokes, I believe, last week. And so there'll be, you know, some trees, debris cleaned. I know they're going to be working on some houses, but to what type, I don't know what, exactly what type of work they're going to be doing on those homes to be able to tell you, you know, what we're going to actually get out of this. We're not going to accept any HHW or anything like that, or asbestos, or, but the general part of what was hurt from the hurricane, we should be able to handle.
Do we have an idea what, I mean, what's the cost to, I mean, what would our charge be that we would be waiving?
The out-of-cycle fee is $20 plus $1.50 a minute. Now, I like to remind people when I say that, because it scares a lot of people, $1.50 a minute. But I can fill up a truck in less than 10 minutes, so you're looking at 15 bucks plus the $20. So $35, and I can haul 24 yards of, 24 cubic yards of rubbish or brush away. That's a fairly large sum.
The savings that comes to this group, though, is the disposal fee at the landfill, because we're, we will incur that, whereas if they loaded it up and had to haul it to the landfill themselves, that's, I know, early on, that was her concern.
About $50 a ton.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I took just that out there last week. It was $48.
Yeah, because that's one thing that they discussed with, okay, we waived it, and then, you know, the landfill fees, we knew they couldn't be waived, so.
We'll incur that.
Yeah. I'm on that committee too, so. That's all, John.
It just allows them to use their private money and stretch it further, that's all. So, so y'all want to, is it okay if we bring something back? You guys okay with that?
Yeah.
And we can, any further, okay.
We expect to be added to the 19th agenda.
The 19th, okay. And, you know, just real quick, these letters, because it was very touching, a lot of them sent cards. The Walsh family from Georgia, Solman's from Martindale, Texas, Collier from Wallingford, Pennsylvania. I'm just going to go through. I cannot pronounce H-A-E-N-I. I don't know if y'all saw that one. Huntington, New York. And the Joyce family from Brandon, Oregon. These were people that sent small amounts to us. I thought that was just incredibly generous, so I just wanted to go through that list. Also, y'all, if y'all have something, Rebuild Texas, that whole program. I would like staff to bring back, maybe the end of January, an update on all the projects we have submitted. And then by then, I know myself, I'm going to make some, reach out to some people with Rebuild Texas and find out what the process is for vetting the projects that we have submitted and make sure that's on task, you know. There are some things, and Councilman Bocknight, you're the one that said those dreaded words, hurricanes are back to back, which I hope you're wrong, but some of these things, we need to make darn sure before the next hurricane season are in place. And some of them are projects we've submitted here. So at the end of January, could we put that on an agenda?
Absolutely.
And, yeah, we'll have our, do our homework before then. I have a question about Oak Street, which is the name of the street. It has been, we put in new curbs and gutters, all the base, total rebuild, but it's been sitting quite a while without asphalt. When about is that going to occur? Do you have a?
We're waiting on, that was the south side of North Street that we, we've been working on, that area right there. We're now working, I'm sorry, that was the north side of North Street. Now we're working on the other side of North Street, and that base is going in, the road's being built. Once that is done, we will come back and mill, what's the street? Wheeler, we will mill Wheeler Street, and then we'll come back and do the hot mix overlay on the whole project, which we're hoping is in April.
April, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's good. That's what I wanted to know, because it's been that way. Of course, the hurricane interrupted us.
Yeah, the hurricane interrupted us. But we do, if we can get all of that done and bring in one time to do the hot mix overlay, we save a little bit of mobilization, so it saves some money.
Is that Deleon Street there in Oak?
Yeah, Deleon Oak.
Yeah, Deleon.
You know what I'm talking about, yeah. It's really nice, the work that's been done.
That looks good.
I can't wait to see the hot mix.
Yeah, it'll be real nice.
Yes, sir. Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Seems like I had something else, but I can't think of it. Okay. Under items from council, we do have an update from the zoo, and I believe Jimmy is here, Mr. Zaplock. Would you like to come up and give us an update on how you guys are doing?
Well, we're open.
That's wonderful.
That's a good thing.
And you've got your new director.
Yes, and this is Liz Jensen. She's our new executive director. She's been with us since October the 9th. After being closed for two months, we are open. We still have buildings that are in the process of being repaired, so we're working on that. But, and I think we have a couple of animals that we're still waiting on to get back, which should be coming in the next couple of weeks, which is good. We had our first big event fundraiser-wise, October 31st. That was Halloween. And then we did an official opening, or reopening, I guess you would say, November the 18th, I think it was. Anyway, it's been, it's been a good start. We've had a lot of support from the community. To me, the zoo looks better than it did before the storm, to be honest. Thanks to a lot of people that have helped us along the way. Christmas event coming up, December the 16th, which will be Santa Claus and some animals and all that good stuff. And then in February, we go to the San Antonio Rodeo. We will be there the whole time. They've contracted us to take a traveling exhibit there, so it's going to be a little tough. We're still without a vehicle, so we're gonna, we'll figure it out. But, and then March, we'll do Wild About Wine again. So it's good. We're rocking and rolling. It's, it's been, it's been tough, just like everybody else. But we're here and we're open, so that's a good thing. But I'm going to let Liz talk, give her kind of a vision of where she sees the zoo going in the next couple of years, hopefully.
Hi, thank you. Really happy to be here. I didn't go through this horrible storm. Well, I live in Corpus, so I did experience part of it, but coming in after the fact. So it's very easy for me to say this, having, not having to go through all the trouble that the rest of the staff did, but it is almost as different with a clean slate. And so the zoo, I think, is going to really grow and develop into something that's going to be really great for Victoria. We have a lot of new things that we have on the table right now. It's just a matter of time of implementing them. But one of the first things that we're going to be doing is to develop a better petting zoo area. So it'll be an area where people can bring their kids. There can be a lot of connections made, which is important. We're going to be really focusing on education, and we're going to have many more programs available to the, to the people of Victoria and elsewhere. And we're also going to be focusing a little bit on conservation. So we have a lot of things going on, and as they come about, we will definitely review or expose what it is that we're going to be doing. So I'm really happy to be here. Thank you.
And just one more thing before we go. Thank y'all again for all your support and getting us back up and running. I know the Parks guys have been a huge help, so thank you all very much. Any questions for us?
You're, I still see your TV ads, so you do still have a GoFundMe account out.
Yes, it's still, it's still live, and we'll take donations in person, too, if you want to come down and see a couple of animals.
Yeah, those are cute TV ads.
Thank you.
So everybody, go visit the zoo.
Absolutely.
Liz, thank you for being here. And Jimmy, you know, so one of the things I tell people, you don't have to come up for nothing. The worst thing about as mayor is having to go through a hurricane, but I know as zoo director, or rather, the board president of the zoo, that was a rough thing for you, so we appreciate you a lot. It was a lot to handle. You spent a lot of time away from your, your work where you make a living, and thank you for that. So it, it's, it, it made a big difference, so. You bet. Okay, I had asked council, I think I brought it up at the last meeting, two weeks ago, about the Martin Luther King Jr. Street designation. And I would like to have some volunteers to meet with city staff a couple of times and come up with some recommendations for council. Ms. Leece, did you, and, okay, Mr. Delgarza? Two would probably work unless someone else wants to really help. Anybody, or you two, maybe? Y'all want to do that? Okay. So if y'all would, I know we have some interested members of the community we can reach out to. But if y'all will set up a meeting.
Be glad to. I'll coordinate.
And come up with, and.
I will. I'll coordinate that meeting, absolutely.
And, you know, it's going to be a bit of a slow process, but we're going to, we're going to come up with something. So, very good. Well, thank you all for volunteering for that. Ms. Scott, you want to talk about Crestwood?
Sure. Staff has given, brought us a report, and if you don't mind, I'd like to have them go through it, because they've gone through these numbers. There are a lot of them, but I think they've done a good job on giving us some possibilities, and then we can talk about the concept.
And before Donald starts, just for council's benefit, you know, you're getting these numbers tonight. Internally, if we could just have a decision from council by that second meeting in January on whether you want to change the course of, you know, the full-depth asphalt, asphalt for four lanes and do anything differently, we just need that decision back, so we can put it back on a future council member, so everybody have time to look at the numbers.
There are really kind of two concepts. One is concrete versus hot mix, hot mix asphalt, I'm not sure what. And, and the other is to widen the sidewalks and make it more accessible for walking and for biking, which would narrow, possibly make three lanes versus four lanes.
Well, there's really not a lot more for me to add. That kind of covers my presentation, so I'll take any questions you may have. No, as, as was mentioned, council asked that we come back before him last month, and before you last month, and bring you some options for Crestwood. And what you have before you in this report is a, on the first page, is a summary of, of concrete versus hot mix and also a summary of four-lane versus three-lane. Crestwood, excuse me, tends to lend itself a little bit to the idea of possibly narrowing down to a three-lane, because many, a lot of the sections of Crestwood already are three-lane with a parking lane on either side. So it sort of lends itself to that. And I know there's been some discussion in the past amongst council about possibly having something that has a conjunctive use hike and bike lane. So we thought this was a good opportunity to bring it to you, show you what the costs are, and let y'all mull it over for a while and, and give us some direction later on of what you'd like to see. So, as you can see, the costs, obviously for concrete, are going to be a little bit more, no matter which way you go. But, you know, if you go all the way down to the bottom and you look at your addition of your 30-year maintenance cost, it becomes a little bit closer over time. So the backup pages here are just strictly the detail behind the numbers that you have on the first page, that you can really dig in and see, you know, what are your cost of your concrete? What are your cost of, of your hot mix? And really dig in and see, see what makes these numbers up.
Well, Mr. Reese, there's a couple of questions I might ask.
Sure.
One is perhaps traffic counts.
Traffic counts.
And the other one would be, concrete generally will have double the life of asphalt in most cases, except when you start throwing in black gumbo, and we do have some of that to that area.
Right.
Do we have an engineering recommendation of which would be superior?
You know, both of these are based on our specs for a, the city's existing specs for a 30-year street, either 30-year hot mix or 30-year concrete.
Okay.
So, and those, those are engineered specs.
Okay.
To answer your question about the traffic counts, the traffic counts on Crestwood in between Navarro and Laurent are about 5,972 cars, or they were during the traffic count that was taken in 2016. And then on Laurent to Ben Jordan, it was about 6,388. And those are all three-lane sections, or two-lane with the, a, sorry, two-lane with the parking lanes on the side.
Okay.
And then the final one, Navarro to Main, is, that's the shortest section, 4,850 cars on that particular day that we did, or that time they did the count.
We can send those numbers out.
Yeah, we can. We can send those numbers out if you'd like.
Okay. You've got an eight, that's an eight-foot?
It's an eight-foot conjunctive use.
Conjugative use sidewalk.
Hike and bike, hike and bike sidewalk.
And that 152,000, is that whole length?
That's full length, yes, sir.
Good lord.
If you look at the.
No, I mean, that's cheap.
It is cheap.
It's because you're already using concrete on the rest of it?
That's, well, no, that's, that's just the cost of the, of the, of the, whether you go, whether you do a three-lane hot mix, that'd be the same, same cost.
That section on Salem, y'all remember that? It was like $96,000 for three-foot or four-foot wide from, to the school there on Salem. I mean, I'm just, I'm shocked. That's great. I'm not complaining. I just, the difference is. Okay. Now, the other full-width concrete or full-width hot mix do not have sidewalk?
Full, no, sir, that does not have, there would not be, there would not be room to put that in there.
There's sidewalk that.
There, I'm sorry, there is existing sidewalk there.
Well, it's patchy.
We would rehab that sidewalk, and if we, if you, council directed us to, we could probably fill in any gaps that we have. But we would not be able to put a full-length, full-width eight-foot.
No, no, but.
You just have a normal sidewalk.
What's normal, three or four foot?
ADA now is five foot. Yeah, ADA is five foot now.
ADA mandates five foot?
Yes, sir.
Well, what we would do on that section is a five-foot because it's attached. You can still do a four-foot, but there's not enough room to do a detached sidewalk in that particular right-of-way.
Yeah, just butt it up against the curb, which I think is better anyway for that area. So, okay, let me back up a minute. So under full-width concrete and full-width hot mix, you have no sidewalk factored in here on either side of it, correct?
There's, there's sidewalk already existing, so we would, we would rip that out and repair it.
But it's spotty. It's not the entire length. There's a few spots. That's okay. I'll go look at it, and we'll talk.
Is that included in the cost that you've got for the, just for the paving, then?
I'm sorry, so, one more time?
Is that included in the cost for the paving? Because you don't have a number here at all.
No, the, let me pull that, that part.
Cost included sidewalk all the way down Crestwood, the normal sidewalk.
So this is just the, this is the addition then?
If you do the conjunctive use sidewalk.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the 152 is the additional.
Is the additional, okay. That makes sense, because that's a game changer for me, council. I want sidewalk, open down that entire length, at least on one side, especially by the school.
And you will have that, even if you stay with the four lanes or go to the three lanes? You're going to have, on one side of that road, you're going to have sidewalks.
Okay. And I didn't mean to get all detailed here.
It's okay.
Does this rebuild, does it trigger the ADA requirements for the five-foot sidewalk?
It will, it will trigger ADA, right, correct?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
ADA will be, yes.
Then we really wouldn't have the ability to rehab the sidewalks.
It'll be reconstructed during this project, to me.
Okay. In some cases, there's utility poles in the middle of those sidewalks.
We will have to work around those.
There's no room?
ADA standards don't allow, there, you don't have enough room to do it.
You need to have, according to ADA, you need to have three, 30 inches to get around it. We always try to get four feet, three to four feet, and we can, we can make it fit.
Okay.
During the time that we were, we would develop these specs, because Councilman Halapaska made a good point, there would be engineering done such that even if council were to say, yes, we think the concept of concrete is a good one, if the engineering told us that that wasn't going to work, is, is there flexibility in the process at that point that we could come back?
Concrete will work.
Yeah, the concrete will work. Concrete is, I mean.
That was my question.
Yeah, concrete will, the concrete will work.
It would just have to be engineered.
Yeah. We've, we've put concrete streets in several places in Victoria, and they've been there for several years now, and they're in good shape.
Laurent's holding up well.
Yeah.
Laurent's holding up well.
Because I do come back to that same thing and encourage people to drive around and look at them. They look so different than, than hot mix.
Concrete will work in this.
Okay.
We learned.
Trying to be reassured.
Yes, sir.
Laurent and Sam Houston are 50-year specs.
It's not a cookie cutter.
50-year specs on Laurent and Sam Houston?
Yes, they're set up for 10-inch, 10-inch pavement is what we have on those two streets.
And this wouldn't be that same spec?
Same 10 inches of concrete pavement.
So it would be.
Is this, I thought this was a 30?
They've just figured the estimated 30-year cost, because that's when we rebuild a hot mix street.
That's typically what we, we average, but I believe we can get, it'll get 50-year life.
Okay, so it's built to the 50-year spec. You're just trying to do apples to apples on a 30-year maintenance.
On the comparison, yes, sir.
Okay.
That kind of makes it not apples to apples. That, that makes it a no-brainer, but anyway. This is good information. I appreciate it.
Where's the extra money come from?
I would recommend we amend the budget for this year. If we choose to do that, it's going to be about $550,000 or $600,000. So, and then we would have to budget for that 19 and 20 when we come back through and do the CIP.
So we'll lose something else down the line.
Possibly. I mean, just depends on what our revenue projections are looking like, yes, sir.
But then we don't think about this one again.
Yeah.
Go back to sales tax.
And I, I think when we looked at Crestwood, also back to the wider sidewalks, looking at the layout of ways to get to the park, and it, this Crestwood kind of makes more sense. And I don't know if you had the map up for that, or if you can maybe show that to us later.
Going into the park?
We have.
Yeah, going, or, you know, I know that I've talked about it for Ben Jordan, but, I mean, for Red River, but that kind of dead ends. But this can kind of lead over to some other roads where it's a viable place.
So you're looking at, to the park? Let me see if I can get there real fast. So here is, here is Vine. And so you see here, there's a small section that does not have a sidewalk right here. But then there's a sidewalk tying in on Vine that goes, and it's a standard sidewalk. It goes, but it goes all the way to the park. And can be.
Yeah, that, that sidewalk, you know, people asked me years ago, why did y'all build that over there? Well, because when we go for those Texas Parks and Wildlife grants, we have to check a box, is your park connected? And so it kind of drove that decision. And I think what you're getting at is you link Crestwood with that sidewalk, it increases that even better, assuming in the future we go for more of those grants.
Well, this would be a lot. Well, this would be a lot different situation in Red River where it wouldn't feed to anything. It'd only be a section, and it didn't make sense, and the traffic counts were higher.
Right.
It still needs further discussion, but perhaps this would be one that could be done, because it does feed to something.
So you need to know by the end of January?
What I would propose is, because I know Mrs. Scott's going to be gone January 2nd, is to bring it back on the 16th. I keep saying the 19th, it's the 16th, thank you, Jeff. And for a decision point, but that gives you plenty of time to look at the data and then call Mayor Donald with any questions, so we could answer any questions and hopefully bring it back that night to get some direction from council.
Well, my office is on Crestwood, and I see no problem going to three-lane that last little stretch. Everything else is three-lane except for this one stretch we're talking about. You know, if we could maybe keep the, I don't even know if you have to keep the flare out at Dairy Treat there. But I like the idea of the eight-foot wide sidewalk. There's tons of foot traffic on there for the schools.
Yep, and Dix and all that neighborhood.
Lot, a lot of traffic, so I think it'd be great, and I don't think it's going to impede traffic really that much.
I think with the maintenance numbers that if it's a 50 and not a 30, your maintenance cost will save you in the long run. And I prefer to have a concrete thoroughfare than a hot mix.
In general, that's true, and we should do that. There are, just, I'm trying to remind everybody, engineering-wise, there's no perfect solution in every case. We need to look at it. But also, how is this going to reflect or affect the Plastob Benavides project? Where are we at on that?
Where are we at on the Plastob Benavides? We are, we, I'm going to answer that from a factual standpoint before the attorney cuts me off.
It's not on agenda.
Yes, since it's not on the agenda, but we have three pieces of right-of-way we're working on, and those are actively being worked.
Okay.
I was hoping we'd get something back on the 16th, but I don't think we are, but maybe by the 1st of January. But we're, we're ready to go. We're ready to bid it as soon as we wrap up those three right-of-way acquisitions.
Okay.
Okay, let's, we okay? Everybody, did your homework?
The sidewalk, is it going to be on just on one side, on the side of, by the Dairy Treat?
The sidewalk will be on both sides. If you, if you do the three-lane, then we propose an eight-foot sidewalk on one side, and then there'd be an existing sidewalk that we're going to rehab or tear out and rebuild on the other side, which is your standard sidewalk.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Have the sewer lines and the water lines been addressed?
They will be, they will be repaired in this, replaced during this project. So when the road goes on top of them, it'll be brand-new water and sewer lines.
It's a total rebuild.
Total rebuild.
Total rebuild.
Which means we're doing utilities.
And right now, we're talking about phase one, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
But we, now, with this decision point, though, we will plan on doing all phases, the direction that council gives us.
Right, right, understand, but for this year...
For the money at phase one, and we'll have to come back and do an amendment to cover the cost.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
We good?
We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donald. Is there anything else? That was a long items from council. Good discussion. Does anyone have anything else? Okay, if not, we'll move into citizens' communication. And anyone who would like to come forward and speak about anything at all, just come on up to the podium. Just provide your name for the record and limit your comments to five minutes. We do have one gentleman who's requested to speak. If he, he can come on up whenever, if he's here. So, Mr. Bailey, did you want to come on up, or? Now, I know you're not Mr. Bailey. But that's okay. Come on up.
My name's Doug Openhouse, and I got a Ford boat tow-in here in Victoria. I came up tonight to see if we can find some way to make the wrecker business a little fairer for everyone concerned. Right now, we have a system that allows us to put a permit on each wrecker that we have to go out and make calls. And so doing so, a lot of guys buy old war-t trucks, put a permit on them, and just set them off on the side somewhere and don't use them. And if we can get it set up where we can have one permit per location, it'd make it fairer for everybody concerned, and everybody can make more money out of it. Because right now, we're spending, we're spending all the money that we make on insurance and permits. There's no way anybody in town can really make any money out of that business. I don't know how the system got set up like this, but it's set that way, so we'd like to try to change it. To show you the kind of unfairness about it, we got two wrecker companies here in town. I got one wrecker each. We got two that's got five each. We got two that's got six each. And we got one that's got 32. So out of every rotation cycle of 55 rotations, one guy gets 32 of them, and all the rest of us combined get the remaining of them. So it's not very fair. I know the guy, he's a nice guy. He's been in business a long time. And I'm not here to bash him or anything. I'm just here to try to make it where it's fair for everybody, not just one person. We have some other tow companies that are here that kind of feel the same way. I think that we can rearrange it where the money we save on insurance could help us make some profit. Everybody could make some profit, because it's three, approximately $350 per month, per truck, just for liability and cargo insurance. So if you got extra trucks that just sit there and don't do anything, you don't even start them up, it's really a waste of money. So that will keep our cost up on charging the public too. We come in here and get a high care so often because we can't make ends meet. This would kind of help that part of it. Depending how maybe we can get together and talk about it. I think that we could raise the fees on the one permit per business, up to $2,000 or $3,000. Right now, the permits are costing $450 a truck. But I think we can make a lot of difference up by just raising the rates per company. And then I have one spot in rotation. Every seven or eight calls come along, they'd be having another spot. It certainly makes things fairer.
Thank you, Mr. Openhouse. So in council, just for anyone watching, these are for non-consent toes, I believe, is that the word? Where the, say, a person's in an auto accident and unable to call a tow truck. It's when the officer on site makes a decision of who to call, so we have that rotating. I have a question. Do we, regarding these tow trucks, we have to go out and inspect them and make sure they run and start? Do we, do we check insurance?
April's an expert in that area.
Yes, they, we do require them to turn in their insurance, and also to maintain their state licensing, they have to prove insurance.
On each one?
Yes.
Okay. And they are checked, and they have to start them and make sure they run?
Yeah, current.
Okay.
Well, that was changed in this last ordinance that we did, so that the state requires to inspect them. Jerry from our service center was going out and inspecting them also, so we changed that so that we would just, we reserve the right to inspect them at any time, but we won't do it on a yearly basis any longer.
I would think we're, well, I shouldn't say, I was going to say we're a small part of their business, but I don't know that for sure. I wish we weren't involved. I don't know why we're in the middle of this. I actually find it, and no offense to the tow truck drivers, it's very annoying, you know, but it's just a fact of life that we have a situation where there's an officer standing there and needs to make a call, and the question of fairness comes up. I've seen it come up, I don't know how many times, over 20, 25 years, I've been coming, sitting out there, Tom, you know, and it always comes up, and it's the same old thing. And, you know, the gentleman with 32 wreckers, if he's paying insurance on every one of them and all the fees and stuff, I don't know what else to do about it. Do y'all want to have any staff make a recommendation to us at a later meeting, come back and, do y'all want to consider this? Any further?
I think if we got some sort of report that says how many calls per entity or per, you know, company, to see what the volume is, because if the 32 gets more, why?
Well, it does.
Well, I understand, because now it's per truck and not per company.
Right.
I understood it was going to be per company, but that was just my impression a long time ago.
Yeah, I know. It's been this way a long time.
It hasn't been this way. It's been per truck for a long time.
And it's, I think, just a different, I mean, that's the system, and so the different companies operate within the system in different ways. And some of them have more trucks as a way to get more calls, and some of them are smaller. You know, if we now shift the rules, then there'll be an adjustment within the companies anyway.
I was, and I'm, we're still under this citizens' communication. Now, Mr. Openhouse, you spoke once. I don't, council, y'all mind? Did you have some more remarks, or?
Yeah, just a couple.
Do y'all have objection?
He can run into me, he can run into mine too if he wants.
Okay, I mean, I'm just saying, we normally do one at a time till, but go ahead.
Well, you mentioned Texas DOT a while ago. Texas DOT actually has most of the rules set up for all the wrecker companies in Texas. Victoria's one of the rare companies, cities that don't have it that way. And another thing I wanted to make is, the sheriff's office and the highway patrol, their systems are set up for one, for one wrecker per business.
Per company.
So each company gets one spot out of the seven or eight companies that are there in the rotation. They don't even charge fees, but I'm just saying that that certainly makes it a lot fairer.
Sir, may I ask you a question? Statewide, you say most of them are allowed one per business?
Yes.
Either that, or they do a 24-hour period for rotation, like Austin. Austin does a 24-hour period, so you'd have, Affordable Towing would run a 24-hour period for PD, for lease department rotation calls. And then the next day, the 24-hour period would go to Allen's, and then Big State, and BNS, and Kobe, or Mid Coast. Everybody would get a 24-hour period. Whatever you get, you may only get one call in that 24-hour period. You may get 50 in that 24-hour period. If you get New Year's, or Christmas, or Thanksgiving, you're going to be busy. You may get, you may get, you know, Monday, it might not be anything going on.
And when one truck wouldn't cover it, they would just go to the next person in rotation?
Yes.
Well, most of the wrecker services here have enough, enough to cover it. Like, any of them can cover a 24-hour period. I mean, everybody's got, most of the companies, if Doug has all his guys on a wreck, you know, on one call, he can call our company, he can call Mid Coast, he can call other companies to go cover that call for him.
Okay.
But it's, it's the 60 trucks on rotation that he's wanting to do, you know, 60 trucks on rotation. For instance, Big State has one truck on rotation. They get a call once every two weeks, where if you have 30 trucks on rotation, or we have six on rotation, with Bailey's, we get, you know, we get two or three calls a week. But like Donnie, he's getting one call every two weeks, and he can't, you know, it's hard for him to make a living.
And I'm just trying to make sure I understand the nature of this as well. I don't, I'm not in the wrecker business, and I shouldn't be expected to know it, so. But I feel like we need to ask the questions that reveal the answers.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's come back with this in a couple of weeks. Let's talk about it over the holidays, and y'all want to, we'll put it on the agenda in January.
Is there any way, is there any way we can get the outline for the rotation guidelines that the dispatchers use or PD uses?
Sure.
Because right now, I'm just shooting at the dark. I mean, I don't understand the rotation process.
Well, and sure, I mean, it's based on the number of records, so, yeah. If there's a...
It is outlined in the ordinance as well.
And this would be for council's consideration, is there a value to being in line with other communities? Is there a value to be the only one that does this this way, or is there a better way to do it? This is a question.
Oh, we could have them bid, pay us the highest bidder, you know. No, I know, they're going to kill me after the meeting if I, I'm not really suggesting that. And Mr. Openhouse is my neighbor. He'll come over and, so...
May I make a suggestion, if you don't mind? Their contracts began July 1, and you may remember, we did all the fees recently. And every one of the wrecker companies got a copy of that ordinance that we were proposing. And so since this is coming up after we've just recently done this, can we, would council allow us to bring back recommendations around March, April? And then we can line it up with the new contract period starting in July, if there's any changes on that? Or do y'all want something expedited sooner than that?
That sounds good.
What, what part?
You're okay with me bringing recommendations back?
Bring it back in March.
And then, and I can reach out to Mr. Bailey and talk further about what he's talking about.
That's what we were basically wanting, just before the new rotation list comes out on July 1st.
Okay, thank you.
We have to do it like right now. We're just, we can all, I guess, survive and pinch pennies until then.
Okay, thank you.
You're always welcome to come talk to us here. It's no problem.
Councilman De La Guarda, do you have any particular feelings? You've worked in emergency more than any of us have.
Not currently, just, I'd like to see a system that follows the rest of the state.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so we'll see that again in the spring. Thank you. Any other citizens' communications still open? About anything at all? Okay, seeing no one, oh. Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm Thomas Timmerman at 113 Trade Win. And what I'd like to talk to you about is the golf course. I know that's the next item. Is it appropriate to go ahead and talk now?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Yes, sir.
It's good to see that the course is going to possibly open shortly, within the next month or so. But what I think we really need to have to ensure that the success of Riverside Golf Course is a definite marketing plan that encourages former members and new members to come and participate in that course. And when I see some hesitancy to engage in a lease of five years for golf courts, that kind of sends a message that there's an expectation that it's not going to fly. So I think that should be a message that you send to the public, is yes, we are committed to making sure this thing works and that the golf course is successful. And then set up ways to encourage more participation, and that means reasonable fees. I would also like to suggest the possibility of setting up intramural competition with colleges, high schools, public, the private schools, where there would be intramural rather than just the high school teams utilizing it. It would encourage more people to participate, and younger ones that would stay with the game into the future. The other thing that we haven't seen so far, at least the general public hasn't, I haven't, is what the fees are going to be in the future, how much your green fees are going to be, cart fees, membership fees, et cetera. And there really needs to be provisions made for, to really encourage people to come out. A $25 Tuesday or something like that, where you get green fee and cart fee all together to get people to come and participate. A lot of people have joined courses that used to play at Riverside. They have joined courses in the surrounding community, some of the country clubs. We've lost memberships there. And it is important to provide a means of encouraging them to come back and play at Riverside Golf Course. And I think one of the best ways to do that is through financial incentives. Now, this is a municipal course, and expecting to have a profit-making enterprise out of it, I don't think is reasonable. Because if you do close the course, it's not budget-neutral. You're going to have to maintain that area, and that's going to cost taxpayer dollars. If you can encourage people to come out and participate, at least you're offsetting that revenue loss that would be required to maintain an area that's not being utilized. So those are really things to consider, and I really appreciate your considerations and the commitment to bringing this golf course back to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Timmerman. We appreciate suggestions, and you're always welcome to provide them. So citizens' communication still open? Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one jump up, we'll close citizens' communications, and we do have... one jump up, we'll close citizens' communications. And we do have, we have public hearings with these two next items. Go ahead and C1.
Sure. Item C1 is an ordinance amending the 27-2018 City of Victoria General Fund, Texas Dot Overpass Reimbursement Fund, and Riverside Park Golf Fund budgets in the amount of $714,191 to provide funding for the operation of Riverside Golf Course, providing for savings, declaring an effective date. And this is a first reading.
Let's open the public hearing on this. I, I think we've already heard comments, but if you want to speak to this item alone, you can come up. One more opportunity. Seeing no one jump up, I'll close the public hearing on C1 and entertain a motion.
Move, we adopt?
Second.
A motion and a second. Are there any questions or discussions?
I have a couple of questions. I think Ms. Raina is going to have to answer them probably.
Is he not here?
Hey.
Raina.
I know. Gilbert's sitting right there.
Oh, there he is. I'm sorry, I didn't see there Gilbert.
We're at, um, so I can have the same thing.
On the write-up, it says Exhibit A and B, right?
A and B.
And we're, we're transferring $40,300 from the Parks Department and Texas Dot Overpass Reimbursement Fund, we're transferring $58,000. So that comes up to $98,300.
And non-departmental?
Hmm?
You got the $42,000, non-departmental.
Can you look at your rev, Exhibit A under your revenues?
Go to Exhibit A.
Turn one more page.
Okay, Exhibit A, you got $58,000, third to the last. And then you can follow with the $42,000. Then the last one is $40,300. So the first $458,000, as you mentioned, is Texas Dot reimbursement. As I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, we can accommodate that. The $42,000 is ready in the budget. The $40,300, that's what's left, or for that one penny that we allocated out to a portion to PD and right away, that's what's the $40,000 that's left of that one penny amount that was increased. And you add all those up, I believe it's $140,300. And that's what the, part of the amendment.
Okay.
We're looking at.
So those are the transfers in, which changes our bottom line expenditures. And we're going to increase those expenditures by the $714,191.
That's correct. At the same time, we're going to increase the revenue side, $824,000, because we are generating some revenue, which also includes $140,000 K from the city side.
Okay. All right. That answers that on that part.
Okay.
Do we want to talk about the business plan that y'all submitted? At this time?
Sure.
Okay. I, I just started looking at it yesterday when I opened my email. Haven't gotten through all of it. One thing that jumped out at me is that we had had a discussion at one time about this being a City of Victoria Municipal Course. And as such, a city resident might have a different rate than someone that's not a city resident, following other municipal courses like in New Braunfels and such. I didn't see that addressed in this plan and what's the...
You're absolutely correct. It's not addressed in there.
So we're not planning to take into consideration that...
If council wants us to, we'll be happy to do that.
Is there a...
I can make it work, whatever y'all want to do. I'll let you know if it's not financially feasible too.
Well, I don't, I mean, to me, it's taxpayer-funded golf course. Taxpayers that are paying for it are residents in City of Victoria.
It's an interesting idea.
Pretty common.
It's that, it's, let me just expand that. That means the current structure, as you saw in the plan, we have a separate one just for, for the citizen resident and a separate one for visitors outside the county, I guess, or...
Well, it sounds like outside of the city limits.
Outside, outside city limits, okay. So let me take and whack at the example here. One of the past programs, you know, X dollars for a city residence is X dollars, and then anybody in the county would be a little different amount. And then outside the county, it'd be the same amount, just, just, just have that differential.
Outside the city limits.
Mr. Bocknight, are you okay with our fee, the fees that we're recommending, would that be your base for city, citizens?
Yes.
And then us incrementally do something higher for non-city residents?
That's, that's feasible.
Yeah, that's...
I always more...
And that's, is it feasible from a marketing perspective, though?
Well, that's, that's the question we're going to find out in the first few months. But I, I think we need to revisit that and analyze it because the way the numbers played out, it was to generate enough revenues to create equity and everything else to make it run and to be competitive among other golf courses. Now, I would have to go and look at what-if scenarios if I add that dollar, should make adjustment somewhere else to bring that to be marketable. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's what I, I don't know, because I...
That has not been played out, sir.
And the problem right now is we don't have good data to tell us how many people that we believe will be citizens of Victoria versus non-citizens in those realms that we've anticipated. One idea might be to let us start with this without segregating and then get, we start doing our market segmentation analysis so we know, we start building that database and then maybe come back, you know, within six months or seven months and change it. But I know, you're probably thinking it's easier to do it upfront than later.
I would rather see it upfront and a marketing strategy, and this is really getting in the weeds and I apologize for it, but marketing strategy is, hey, grand reopening of Riverside Park, all non-resident fees are waived.
You mean, you mean resident?
No, all non-resident fees are waived.
So there's a fee, but we're just going to waive it at first?
As a marketing strategy.
To encourage maybe the first few months or something?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, and it's, as long as we stay with, you know, it's easy to do with that, since you're saying that base that we presented, those fees we presented, which is an average of $31, then we can do an incremental increase for that.
You know, $4, $5 more.
I understand.
That's what I was going to ask you then, how much?
No.
A few dollars?
A few dollars, but it helps us because...
Just as an observation, we don't do that with the softball in Little League fields. And I'm wondering, because the City of Victoria has put out the money for youth sports complex, and we don't charge differently for teams that are in or outside the city. They're all playing, they're all, and we feel like we make it up because they might get a hotel room now and again or go out and get them some food to eat before or after the game. Do we use that same philosophy here? Or should we segregate? I don't know. It's a question.
And we don't have good data. The library, do they charge different?
No.
No?
But that's part of our contract.
City and county.
Oh, that's right, it's exchange, yeah.
It's something typical that I've seen on golf courses that are public golf courses in different areas, that you have a resident and a non-resident fee.
You know, since we've pretty categorized senior citizens, could that be incorporated into what he's talking about and use a senior citizen slash Victoria citizen? And that way you already have a fee in there or no?
Didn't we get a rate for first responders? We get a rate for teachers and we rate for...
No, there, there is a madness to the numbers, too. There is some suction as to what plays out, senior citizens versus all that.
I'm just saying, you know, you already have a rate set up for a senior citizen rather than create another tier.
I think it's, if, if it's okay with council, that if council is comfortable with this start rate that we're showing here as reflective as being that of the City of Victoria citizens, it's feasible to make another scale for the ones that you want to classify outside seal limits or et cetera. That's feasible. What I cannot guarantee is from the marketing standpoint is that I'm not going to generate all that revenue because I created these two different tables. I would have to go back and make some assumptions on the round plays, like, okay, is it, right now, I, I'm comfortable with the numbers that I selected because of data that I can use. But if I say, okay, if I increase the outside play by X dollars, would that necessarily increase my play by X percent? So that's what I have to fine-tune and get comfortable with. I know, I, I understand the theory. There's nothing wrong with it. Getting to that magical number, where it's going to fly out, that's what's, I'm rolling my head right now thinking about it. And it's, it's possible. But if, if everything, the way it stands right now with the rate structure as it is being the start point, we can work something up in the next few weeks. I can do that in a heartbeat.
Yeah.
Then if it didn't work, you know, I guess we could go back to our original plan. No, 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 I'm talking about if we go to the second, no. Do you know what difference it is between the city resident and the outsiders for the other golf courses you're talking about?
I can't remember. I was just looking at Lantana and New Braunfels.
I was going, I was going to go out there, research and look at what their differential and use something as a base. So you're reading my mind already, but I need to start somewhere.
Okay.
So it's, I want to know what they're dealing with first and then I can incorporate something to the rates and let the city manager, everybody else look at it. But I think it's, it's feasible, very feasible.
And, and the resolution that y'all adopted back in September with those kind of base rates that we presented also gave me the ability. You, you're allowing me to adjust the rates as we need to. So when we get into these situations, you know, where we, I know Rolando is sitting somewhere here.
Back here.
Where he sees that there's opportunities to offer, you know, special play or something, then we'll be able to do that kind of thing, too. So...
Is there an annual membership going to be offered?
Uh, yes, sir. And we're calling it an annual pass to get away from calling it a membership, but an, yes, sir, there's an annual pass.
Yeah, I can see that concept Mr. Bocknight's talking about applied to the annual membership.
Well...
Not just the daily.
Well, I, I make the assumption it's across the board.
For all, and, and that's...
Oh, that's, I'm wrong. You need to tell me.
Yeah, we, I can't, we need a consensus up here, you know, if we can get four people that y'all like the idea of the tiering, that will help us go back and work on something. But, but hopefully we can get the budget adopted so we can, because our goal is to get the golf course open January 6th, which is quickly approaching, so.
Well, I like the idea. I think, just bring something, recommendation back.
Does the, but does the, the tiering that you're talking about, if somebody's from out of county, can they still have an annual pass?
Out of city.
Out of city.
Out of, okay, out of city, lives in the county, lives in Cuero.
Uh huh.
Can they qualify for the annual pass?
I'm sure there's some way to do it. There's some way to do that. I've noticed that on Lantana's website.
We're not going to turn that away.
We'd be glad to have an annual pass for them.
You bet.
Can I, can I read these rates real quick? Just, if you want to or...
No, 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 absolutely. I was going to suggest also that this will be posted. Go ahead.
Can we, do y'all have something to pull the rates up on?
Mr. Bocknight, we have the, the website available to pull up so you can see it online.
Oh, that'd be great, just for the public to see what these proposed rates and not think they're good rates.
While you're pulling those up, I just wanted to confirm that on this chart, it shows total fees, but the round fee and the cart fee are separable. So if somebody's walking, they're not going to have the cart fee.
That's, that's correct.
Or they have their own cart, right?
That's different.
We have, we have a plan in place to deal with that.
Trail fee.
I didn't, I don't play golf. I'm sorry.
That, that's if they have their cart that's at the cart shed.
Yeah, they have to rent the cart shed to have the pro, the pass as well be added to it to have, it's a trail pass, cart pass, and shed rental. Does that make sense?
There's a lot of fees.
Well, I don't play golf, so, okay.
Okay, in other words, right now, the, the plan calls for about X, 75, up to 75 cart shed rentals, okay? If you have 75 cart sheds and people want to rent them, they require also to buy an annual, I call it golf trail pass.
Okay, I see it.
And they can use the cart as much as they want at the Riverside.
That's at $1,536 a year?
Yes, sir. Plus, that, that's the pass.
$1,536 a year.
Plus the, mhm, plus the rental fee.
Yeah.
Plus the rental fee. The rental fee's $720 a year.
Yeah. The, the rental is $720. The annual pass is about $1,536. But the kicker here is everybody got to understand is that, especially a golfer like myself, we set the stage, if you read it, that it had a discount, be less than a 31 average. But you as the golfer will control the number. If you go out there and play seven, eight times a month, I mean, you're paying less than $20 around then. So, you know, we want to get at least our, a fixed portion of it so we can recover some of the fixed costs. And then everything else will be up to the golfer. They want to play more than six, seven times, and it's paying for itself, more than that.
One other question while they're pulling that up. Is there going to be a GIN terminal there?
GIN terminal.
Terminal.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
We'll, we'll have, we'll have GIN, we'll have GIN available. We'll be able to post scores for you and those kind of things. We won't have an actual terminal, a separate PC or anything where you'll be able to post scores, but you can, it's just like get on laptop or, or phone or anything like that. But we'll, we'll have the option. If you wanted to turn in scores, then yes, we can, as long as we have your, your member ID number, yes, we can post those things for you. That's, that's all enough.
For us non-golfers, would you explain what a GIN terminal is?
When you say GIN, when you say GIN terminal, I'm looking at GIN, okay? I didn't know we had, we're going to sell GIN there, but yeah, thanks.
Well, Gil, do, do we charge higher for senior citizens because they play slower?
No, not, not at all. So, so the GIN system is the, the national handicapping system for, for, based off USGA's recommendation. So each golf course has a certain rating, a slope rating, then a course rating, gives it an, gives you an idea of how hard the golf course is, playing from different tee markers, depending on length of the golf course, lets you know just how difficult it is based on how it's set up. And then how you play that golf course can move your index up or down. And GIN is just the system that's used and where you can enter scores and, you know, a certain number of scores to get yourself to a, a GIN handicap index that can be used around several golf courses, you know, throughout the US, as long as they're part of, part of that system.
Would you spell that, please?
Yeah, G-H-I-N.
Thank you.
Golf Handicap Index Network.
Okay, thank you. That's for the serious golfers.
No, I, I heard it that way. Can you pronounce it all of it, not GIN?
It, it's useful in a bunch of different situations.
There we go.
Mr. Bocknight, there's the, your group of rates. And this is, this is our, our website is playriversidegc.com. So something that you, it is active and usable at the moment. You cannot book tee times just yet. We have that link broken until we are, are ready with our point-of-sale system to make sure that all those things are active and correct. But we will have, off of our homepage, there's a, a button, one of the first buttons that pops up is to book a tee time. And you'll be able to check tee times, all that good stuff online.
But that side is up, right?
Yes, sir, that side is up.
So that's, I'm reading it, playriversideegc.com?
Uh, playriversidegc.com.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, playriversidegc.com.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Play Riverside Golf Course. Okay.
Thank you.
Was that, those three? And then y'all come back with, we'll talk about rates some more later, but it's not really germane to the budget amendment, I guess, but...
No, I'm good with the rates, just I'd, I'd like to see it on resident fee.
We're also going to post this business plan, I think, on golf course, whatever, their, their website as well so they can have that. Because what's not on there there, I think they're going to update it, too, is that the actual program passes are not still listed.
Okay.
Since Rolando and Colby's standing up there, I know y'all all met Rolando. For the public, though, you know, he's our golf, head golf pro, and we're glad to have him and very excited about what he's bringing to the table. He was instrumental in the business plan and how the design's setting up. In addition to Gilbert did a lot of work on the financials, as you all know. That's Gilbert's Fortane does an excellent job for us. But I was out yesterday, I think it was yesterday, yeah. Drive, the golf course is looking wonderful. It's been overseeded, it's greening up. You can see the difference in your fairways and the mowing, you know, the different levels. So it's, it looks really good. And the trees that were down have been removed. You can tell where there were trees, but it's smooth and, but they've been removed. The pedestals for the controllers for the irrigation system were in, so those were nice sitting out there with the controllers on them. So it's looking good. So we're, we're really excited. And January 6th, we'll be here before we know it.
Yeah, thank y'all for getting this business plan together. And if I have any other questions, as I finish going through them, I'll make sure an email.
No problem.
Okay, council, any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Okay, C2.
C2 is an ordinance amending the 2017-2018 City of Victoria General Fund budget to provide funding in the amount of $163,688 for the railroad closure seal code project, providing for savings and declaring an effective date. for the railroad closure seal code project, providing for savings and declaring an effective date.
We'll open the public hearing on C2. If anyone would like to speak to this item alone, it will be the time. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing on C2, and I'll entertain a motion.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Motion seconded. Is there any discussion?
This is a crossing that is going to be coming out off of nursery and to, um, right?
The Ball Airport. These were, three were closed in order for us to get the crossing up there, yes ma'am.
Okay.
So the three that were closed is where the work is being done.
But it's where Ball Airport's gonna meet Nursery Road or somewhere around there.
Go across there.
Yes.
But these three that are listed, it's with text dot, it's the road work, the asphalt work that needs to be done on it. So, and we will be reimbursed by text dot.
Most importantly, that.
Reimbursed, yes, sir.
Currently, these railroad crossings are not closed yet.
Yes, ma'am, they're closed.
They are closed.
Yes, they're closed. When, when you go up main, you know, you can see those barricades sitting there.
Okay, yeah, it's been a while.
It has, this project has been a lo, oh, fourteen maybe, twenty-fourteen?
I think the original, came to council in October of twenty-fourteen, original, first time, just bouncing back between city and the text dot, and then Union Pacific, it just, a lot of, a lot of paperwork. Just took a lot of time.
We're glad to get it finished.
Absolutely.
Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same. Okay, thank you, counsel. We'll do one, three, and four of the consent agenda.
Sure, and mayor and counsel, I want to remind you that the city secretary has put in front of you a substituted version of the minutes that strikes one parenthetical out of the last paragraph, or the next to last paragraph of the minutes. And so on the consent agenda, we're asking you to approve the substituted version of the amendments. So the consent agenda tonight includes three items. They are first, the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November twenty-first, twenty-seventeen. D3, which is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with AJ Shredding Service for the fiscal year twenty-eighteen maintenance mowing of Loop 463 right of way in the amount of fifty-six thousand dollars and declaring an effective date. And D4 is a ordinance amending section ten dash forty-one related to nuisances to exempt certain mowing requirements for cities, citizens whose properties abut an extraordinarily wide right of way, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for publication, codification, and savings, and declaring an effective date.
Second.
Motion seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same. Okay, ayes have it. Now D2.
D2 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with the Retail Coach LLC to update and continue the implementation of the city's retail economic development plan in the amount of thirty thousand dollars and declaring an effective date.
Do you, uh, Ms. Elise, would you, oh, we gotta get a motion, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Uh, Mr. Farmer, who's here to maybe give an update, would you like to hear that first, or you want to ask your question?
Yeah, the update would be fine.
Go ahead, sir.
Awesome. Well, Aaron Farmer, Senior Vice President with the Retail Coach. This is my fifth or sixth time in the last several years to get in front of council. And I just really wanted to kind of give you an update, uh, over the last few years, what had been going on specifically the last year, and really talk about the process going forward into the, this next, next year. So I was actually in town today, had a chance to, to drive around with John Kaminsky and do some of my own research as well. A big part of our process in representing Victoria to potential retailers and restaurants is we feel like we need to know what's happening on every corner. We feel like we need to know, if we're gonna be talking to retailers, talking to restaurants, talking to developers, we've gotta know what opportunities exist. The first question we get from any retailer, restaurant, or developer is what site is available? So Victoria's competing with communities directly around you, but also in the region and throughout the state. So what, um, you know, what's going to, to set Victoria apart from some of these other communities? That's, that's what a retailer wants to know. So number one, we've gotta know what sites are available. Um, we have, we, we can't announce them today, but talked to the developers and re, and retailers in the last few weeks. We've got three new national retailers that will be, will be able to publicly announce in the, in the next few, few weeks to maybe month or two, um, that are coming to town. Large national retailers that'll help bring up the, those sales tax dollars, uh, which is, which is really exciting. And, uh, one of those retailers in particular, myself and John Kaminsky, we actually called the retailer, connected them to the shopping center leasing agent, and kind of put that deal together. So that was, that was exciting. We're gonna continue outreach over this next year to, to retailers, restaurants, developers, and brokers. Uh, in, in the retail industry, you, you can't just reach out, reach out to the retailers and the restaurants. A lot of times you need a developer to put that project together, to actually build the project, make it happen. And then also, a lot of these retailers use brokers, uh, which are, in a, in a, in a sense, gatekeepers. You know, the, the broker will go out and, and work with people like us, or, or work on their own to find sites that are available. So we really have to focus on reaching out, recruiting retailers, restaurants, developers, and brokers. We are going to update the numbers. Um, so data is very important in the real estate industry. Retailers need to know if they are going to locate a store or a restaurant here in Victoria, they're going to be successful. They can't afford to open a, a, a low-performing store or, or a store that will close soon. So we're gonna be running new numbers. If you remember the, the retail trade area, um, that's where people are coming from to shop and eat in Victoria. It's much larger than the city limits. We've gotta update that, that trade area because it changes, uh, over time as you get new retailers in, as, as competition and those sort of things. So we'll be updating the numbers, also the gap analysis, which, which tells us how much money is leaving Victoria versus how much is coming in. And then lastly, we'll con, we'll continue to represent Victoria at industry trade shows as well. So the International Council of Shopping Centers conventions, uh, the Retail Live conventions. And then the end goal in this whole entire process is obviously to get retailers and restaurants to locate here in Victoria. Sales tax is important to the city, uh, as we know. Um, one of the ways you do that is, is you get new retail, new restaurants in here. So, um, lastly, our, our, our final goal is if we can just get that retailer, we can get that developer, we can get that broker to Victoria. We can get them in the car with us, we can get them driving around looking at sites with us. You see the deals happen that much quicker. So that's, just in kind of in a nutshell, mayor, um, and, and counsel, that's, that's what we have, that's what's been happening, and that's what we have planned over the next year.
Very good. Ms. Elise, you?
What would you, um, what percentage of success would you say that you gave us in the last five years as far as bringing somebody here?
So percentage?
Yeah, or, you know.
Just like a number?
Yeah.
I would say, uh, and factually would say, I think we've been responsible, or at least part of the process, in, in probably five to seven retailers and restaurants coming to Victoria. I, I never want to say that we're the only reason they come, because you have the brokers in the industry and you have those. But our goal is if somebody is looking at Victoria or even thinking about the region, we want to make sure Victoria's in front of them. So I, I could point to some specific retailers that I know we were involved with in particular. So I'd say five to seven retailers, uh, and restaurants that have come, but also there's a couple of developments that are in process right now. A couple of redevelopment projects as well that we're working closely with, uh, the developers and the landlords there, so that we are involved in that process also.
It's been five years.
Five years, yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and we're, you know, i, if you look at, if you, if you listen to TV news and those sort of things, it sounds like, a lot of times it sounds like retail is hurting. And it is because of Amazon and those sort of things. Good thing is, we live in Texas, and, um, retailers are moving into Texas left and right. Really, from a, from a retail standpoint, is really one of the top three fastest-growing states as far as retail goes. So, um, we're still seeing a lot of interest. Like I mentioned, we've got three that are, that are coming in soon. So it's, it's not doom and gloom from the retail industry. You've gotta just work a little bit harder to get in front of them.
And this comes from Sales Tax Corporation, so.
Mr. Knight's sitting out there, yes, sir.
Right, thank you, sir. Um, yeah, you know, it's relative to our investment in VDC. This is a small amount, and I don't mean that in any way derogatory, but in oftentimes in recent years, our sales tax collections have exceeded our property tax collection. So to invest a small amount to ensure the health of that revenue, I think's really, really a good thing, so.
Well, and, and you know, when council agreed to go this route, we realized that we were not marketing our retail component, you know. VDC's responsible for primary jobs. The retail side was not being marketed, and in today's environment, when the dollars are tight, we've got to market and make sure they know about us, um, so we're not overlooked. So I think for the amount that the Retail Coach charges us, we've gotten a lot of mon, a lot of value out of that money. And I, I can promise you, we'd be done to the level it's being done. And we couldn't hire a person full ti, full-time for thirty thousand dollars to do it, so.
And I knew about the three, but I don't know who. I don't want to know, because, but you went and said it, now everybody's gonna ask me. Tomorrow, I'm gonna get, I do not know.
So, and, and, and let me say really quick. So what, what happens in the retail industry is these retailers, they're compete, they have competition, obviously. They have the other, other retailers that they're competing with, and they want to be the ones that announce that. So they can announce when the store is going to open, and, uh, you know, kind of not, just from a competitive standpoint, they don't want their competition knowing when they're opening. So, um, that's, that's why it's, it's probably better not to say it in a, in a public setting.
But even not in public, so council doesn't even know. So when, when the mayor's asked tomorrow, when he says he doesn't know, that's right, he doesn't know.
You're right, yes.
And I only knew about the three from about five minutes before the meeting, so you do your thing.
Absolutely.
Okay. Counsel, are there any other questions? Okay, um, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same. Okay, thank you, Mr. Farmer.
We're excited about the continued partnership. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. E1?
E1 is a resolution appointing one new member to fill a vacancy and reappointing two current members to the Victoria Sales Tax Development Corporation Board of Directors and declaring an effective date. Mayor, of course, this council, this resolution rather does have a blank in it that we would need to fill by nominations, and we do have applications in your packet, and I have ballots to go through the election process, if that's what you'd like to do.
Yes, we tied last time, and we had someone absent, so.
That's right. So this time with an odd number of council members, hopefully we will have a, a determinate, determining vote. These are ballots that we've prepared in advance, and I will, as I always do, remind the public that we do not have secret ballots. At council, these ballots will be preserved for public inspection. If anybody's interested in it, they can get them at the secretary's office. Council members, as usual, put a number one in, at the top, indicating that this is the first ballot. Put your name on the ballot, and then you can circle one of the three names who have submitted applications for the public's, uh, information. The three names are Will Armstrong, Richard Janeca, and Helen Bulker. And then if you pass the ballots back to me, the city secretary and I will tabulate them and report the tabulation of the ballots. Thank you. All right, that is a four-three vote, excuse me, four-three-one, that can't be right. Four-two-one, thank you. Four-two-one vote nominating Will Armstrong for the VSTDC Board of Directors. And so counsel, if it pleases you, we will fill that name into the blank, and then we're, we will consider the resolution.
Okay. No, I wouldn't imagine there's any discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay. E2?
Do we have to have a motion in the second?
Did we, did we have a motion?
We did not have a motion on that, so, yeah, because we were waiting, thank you.
Oh, you just read it, we voted, I'm sorry, okay. Redo. How about a motion, counsel?
Move that we approve the resolution with the addition of the name of Will Armstrong.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Thank you, Ms. Cough, pointing that out. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same. Okay, thank you, ayes have it.
A quick note for the Roberts Rules of Order mavens who might be watching on TV. The reason I didn't stop that is there is actually a rule that applies to small boards like this that says if you vote on something without a motion, as long as it is clear what is being voted on, it's perfectly valid even without a motion or a second being made. So just, just for the mavens who are watching online.
All right.
I might not have brought it up, except we've got like three or four of those in a row.
We do, we have several here. All right, so the next resolution is a resolution reappointing six current members and appointing one new member to the Building and Standards Commission and declaring an effective date. And this resolution does have all the names already filled into the blank, so as long as you're satisfied with those names, we can take a motion on that.
I move that we adopt.
Okay. We have a motion in the second to adopt the six names. I'll just read them off. Nick Kenojoso, Raleigh McCoy, Eric Mosher, Sherry Strickland, Bobby L. Thomas, and Victor Marshall. That's for the Building and Standards Commission. And Mr. Brooks.
Proper Brooks.
Okay, okay, I got you.
As the new member.
As the new member. No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same. Okay, ayes have it. E3?
E3 is a resolution reappointing three current members to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals and declaring an effective date. Likewise, we have all three names already in the blanks on these resolutions, so if you're satisfied, we can have a motion to approve that.
So moved. Second.
Motion seconded for Michael Atkinson, Philip Schrader, and Richard Janeca. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same. Ayes have it. E4?
E4 is a resolution reappointing or appointing members to the Parks Commission and declaring an effective date. And for this, we do need to go through the ballots. There are no blanks in the resolution. We didn't have prior guidance from council. So, mayor, would you prefer to circle the top three on a single ballot, or would you prefer to do one name at a time?
Top three?
Top three.
Yeah, you're already going through.
First, yeah, y'all take a little while. First ballot through, yeah, this will take a while to do because there are multiple names going on to the, uh.
And if you don't mind, Thomas, you know, something at the last meeting, those, that normally we get direction because the three individuals that are, their term is expired, they all do wish to be reappointed. But council didn't give us, in the past, normally you've just said, you know, okay, they wish to be reappointed, we'll reappoint. But we did not get that direction last time, so.
Thank you. For the public's information, the names being considered are Lee Keeling, Mike Rivera, Gail Repka, Jesse Olivares, and Natasha Trevino, Eric Leonard, and Helen Bulker. Wait, just a second.
You're circling three names.
Make sure I understand clearly. Uh, Lee Keeling is, is wanting to continue on. We have the option to leave him on or to vote him off at this point. Traditionally, we have allowed those that wish to serve, continue to serve. Is this ballot gonna be the way we want it is to be?
We, we did not give that indication at the last meeting. We asked to vote. But we, that's, that's why we're.
So what we're doing here, we're just gonna do a clean slate?
Pick your top three, and then let's, we'll see how.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And just for clarification too, Mr. Hal Pascal, Mr. Keeling, Mr. Rivera, and Gail Repka, all three wish to be reappointed. It's not just Mr. Keeling.
But we don't have to do that.
No, you don't.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But that should be taken into consideration, so, okay.
And that board has term limits.
Yes, it does.
Correct, but.
Yes, it does.
I would say after, while he's counting, we take a break, but we're so close to the finishing, I don't, we'll just.
Here it is.
Another one. Call Andrew.
All right, that resulted in seven votes for Mr. Keeling, five for Mr. Rivera, and four for Ms. Repka. Those were the three highest vote-getters, and so if it pleases council, we'll fill those three names into the resolution and then consider the resolution as completed.
Do we have a motion, Jan?
So moved.
Second. Second.
I had already forgotten. Ms. Elise, did she step out?
She just stepped out.
Okay. We'll give her a minute to return. Y'all mind? Okay. So the next one is, uh.
Make the motion again so she knows what, what we're voting on.
Okay, I see. No, I'm just looking ahead. I want to give her a few minutes to return, let her vote. So we have one more meeting before Christmas, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
And that is the 16th?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I hear. We waited for you. That's okay. Okay, so we have a motion in a second for E4.
And the three names, Ms. Celeste, were Lee Keeling, Mike Rivera, and Gail Repka.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, the same? Okay, ayes have it. E5?
E5 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Vicki T. Vogel, Victoria County Elections Administrator, to provide services to administer city elections and declaring an effective date.
So move.
Second.
The motion second, so this is just a contractual change of a name. So any questions?
Ms. Vogel's here.
Oh. How are you?
I'm good. How are y'all doing?
Good.
I just wanted to come and say hello and introduce myself, and I look forward to working with you this May.
Thank you. I think we've always received great service from that department, we appreciate it.
Thank you, I intend to keep it all up for you.
Okay, keep the prices down, you know.
I'm going to do my very best.
Yes, ma'am, I understand. Counsel, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, ayes have it, thank you.
E6 is a resolution accepting donated funds from the Victoria 100 Club in the amount of $23,904.24 to be used for the purchase of a Kubota RTV X1104 utility vehicle and a water pump skid unit for use by the Victoria Fire Department, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to accept this donation and declaring an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second, are there questions?
I have one question. Does this skid unit fit in the bed?
Fit in the bed of the utility? Yes, we went and got the skid unit and then found the utility truck that it would fit.
Okay, because it's about four inches longer, it's all right if it hangs over?
Yeah, it hangs out.
Okay.
The backseat lays down?
Mm-hmm.
And buys you a little bit more space. But yeah, it's, the skid unit manufacturer identified, there's like three trucks based off the weight and the suspension and the dimensions that it, that'll fit.
Yes, that's what I was, my next question, but I answered it, I looked up everything, it's about 150 pounds or 120 pounds under the weight limit.
Yeah, it's not much.
It's close, it's the foam in there and loaded up, so.
Nobody can ride in the vehicle.
Oh, there's a different weight for the vehicle, for the passengers, but this is just the cargo weight.
Yep. No, so what, really what we wanted to do is just publicly thank the 100 Club, Ms. Peggy Cunningham, board members here tonight, and we, they have been so gracious in supporting the fire department, and in particular, all first responders in our jurisdiction, and this is another wonderful gift of almost $24,000 that will, that will really assist us in fighting grass fires. But it's also multipurpose, the back, the unit can be pulled out, and we can use it for an EMS unit, and as well as, we find it unique, sometimes on hazmat calls during the heat of the summer, when they're in Level A suits, they can't stay in those suits very long, and we exhaust them walking to the scene. So having actually a transport vehicle, we could actually get them a little bit closer to the scene and utilize them at the site. So I think we'll find more uses for it, and so, but we're very grateful for their providing this for us.
It seems like they've been very generous a lot lately, and so I see Peggy, it's greatly appreciated.
We're going to continue to be generous too, all they have to do is ask. But I just wanted to tell you all a little personal tale about your first responders. After the hurricane, I suffered from heat stroke, and I did not know I was passing out, I thought I was going to sleep. And the lady that cleaned for me called the fire department, and the next thing I knew, there were four young men standing at the end of my bed, saying, "Miss Cunningham, Miss Cunningham, we're going to take you to the hospital." And I said, "I don't need to go to the hospital," and the next thing I knew, they were apologizing for a bump in the road, but I know y'all are taking care of those. But I really, we really appreciate the first responders, and we're glad to do anything we can for them. And I think y'all all know that Victoria has the best of the best, and we're proud to be of service to them. Thank you. And I hope to see y'all in January, February, and March, because we've got more requests coming out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Okay. No further questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, the same? Thank you. E7?
E7 is a resolution suspending the December 21st, 2017 effective date of the Centerpoint Energy Intex and Centerpoint Energy Texas Gas South Texas Division requested rate change to permit the city time to study the request and to establish reasonable rates, approving the cooperation with other cities in the Centerpoint South Texas service area, hiring legal and consulting services to negotiate with the company and direct necessary litigation and appeals, authorizing the intervention in GUD number 10669 at the Railroad Commission, authorizing legal representation, requiring reimbursement of city's rate case expenses, finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed is open to the public as required by law, requiring notice of this resolution to the company and legal counsel, and declaring an effective date.
Second.
The motion second, are there any questions?
I have a question, I mean, I've looked at this, I've read this, but would you translate all of this? So what happens if the rate that they've set turns out to be the rate, I guess, that's approved?
That's correct. So the way that this, the process works in Texas typically is that a regulated utility requests from the Railroad Commission permission to increase the rate. And because the city retains original jurisdiction, we get to review that rate, and we get to suspend the implementation of that rate temporarily, while we look to see whether that's the correct rate for the customers to pay. This is not the rate that the city pays for gas, this is the rate that the customers of Centerpoint pay for their gas. And so it affects all of our residents, it include, it affects all of the businesses and consumers within the city that buy gas from Centerpoint, which is the only utility in town. The last time that Centerpoint submitted a rate case was in December of 2010, so it's been a while since they've asked for a rate increase. This rate increase would be a $540,000 increase, which is overall about a 1% increase in rates. That is about a 3%, 3.8% increase on residential customers and a slight decrease in some commercial and large-volume customers. And so what this resolution does is it temporarily suspends their implementation of the new rate to allow us to review the rate that they're proposing and to negotiate with them perhaps a different rate.
And that would be effective then, December 21st, or effective when we reach the agreement?
It would have been effective December 21st, this suspends it for 90 days, so we're looking at a March timeframe.
Okay.
So what happens, I think, not to speak for Ms. Scott, but what happens if the state rules favorable for Centerpoint and the attorney fees?
The attorney fees are reimbursed by Centerpoint regardless of how this.
Regardless, okay.
Yes. Under state law, the regulated utility pays for the attorney's fees.
That comes out on the second part of this that we're going to discuss in a little bit.
Yeah, there is a companion ordinance, a companion resolution that goes along with this as well, yes.
Okay, because I thought I had read that somewhere, it's a separate, yeah.
Guarantees are always going to be contested, because there's no cost.
When is the new rate effective? It's suspended right now, so it's effective.
It's suspended for 90 days, so it will become effective in March.
Regardless of whether it's.
Unless, unless we adopt it earlier, approve it earlier.
Will the rate come back to us, or it's going to be automatic?
Typically, it's a negotiated rate that's agreed on between the cities and the, and Centerpoint, and I believe that we will have a resolution come back to you at that point.
I didn't remember, because I think it was, oh, it's been too long.
It was, yeah, it's several years ago, the last time we did this.
I think it came on the 12th, so this was voted before, okay.
Okay. No further questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, the same? Ayes have it, so E8?
E8 is the companion resolution authorizing the city attorney to execute an engagement letter of representation with Lloyd Gosling, Rochelle and Townsend, PC, for representation of the cities served by Centerpoint Gas South Texas in the Centerpoint Gas South Texas rate case and declaring an effective date.
Second.
Mayor and council, just a point of clarification, I want to point out, the prior resolution authorizes the hiring of outside counsel. This resolution is authorizing my department to serve as the lead counsel or the lead city in that case, so the suit would be filed in our name, the bills would actually come to us, they are then processed through to Centerpoint, and Centerpoint pays the bills. So essentially, we're serving as a conduit for the billing purposes.
Have you ever done that?
Yes, we did it in 2010.
We were the lead?
We were the lead.
Okay, I don't remember that, no. I'm thinking of that other staff or South Texas aggregation, that's electrical or something.
Right.
Okay.
It's a similar process for electricity.
Okay, any questions? We have a motion second, correct? Yes, okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, the same? Ayes have it. Number nine?
E9 is a resolution awarding the contract for the 2017-18 reclaimed seal coat project to Brannon Paving Company Limited for their low bid of $1.819,476, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project and declaring an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Motion in second, are there any questions?
Is there any chance to put in speed bumps while these are going on?
What?
Did you really just ask that, counsel?
I think I've asked this before, but is there a difference, why are some of the roads in red and some of them in blue?
Yes, some of the roads, there are some sections of this that are going to have a reclaim seal, and those are the ones that are red, we're actually going to reclaim those sections, get them down to the, a few inches, and then build them back up, add some stabilized cement, and then build them back up. And then the rest of them are just a chip seal.
So reclaim means that you're going to go back down to the dirt base?
Go down a little ways into the, into the base, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and the others is chip sealed?
Right on top.
Just directly on top?
Correct.
Which are much quicker?
Correct, yes, ma'am.
And this is part of that long-term maintenance schedule?
That's right.
These are, you know, on the schedule to be maintained to get the maximum life out of some of them.
Yes, sir.
You know, because I understand, you know, as always, we get those calls, and I'm sympathetic, but there are streets in worse shape that require a total rebuild that are part of a larger effort over the next few years.
Right.
And you may remember, a few weeks ago, we asked y'all to add some additional streets, and these are added into this, we were able to get those in.
Right.
We just need to help our constituents and make sure they understand the best possible, you know, why we do things in the order we do them.
How has that been, working with vacuuming up the rocks and the gravel? I think we added another pass before or something like that.
Right, we had.
Is that helping?
Yes, that seems to be, seems to be helping. On this last seal coat project we had, I think there was very minimal complaints on the, on the rock, and you know, once the project was completed, we went back in and we, or we went in and we did our initial sweeping, and then, Ken, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we wait a little, a short period of time, and then we come back and we sweep it one more time, get, let that road do any more shelling that it's going to do, and then we pick it up one last time. And we, you know, Ken, did we put that in the spec to have that done? So we're doing that twice on this one as well.
And the better aggregate, I think the aggregate made a big change.
Right, we changed.
Personally, my, what I've seen, it helped a lot, interlocking of the different aggregate made a big difference.
That did help a lot, yes, sir.
Yeah.
On the benchmark map, I noticed that there's nothing for the alleyways that are impassable right now.
Oh, yeah, there's some pretty bad stuff.
I've asked a number of times what the plan was for that, and I know Mr. Short had been working on a plan for those alleyways.
Okay. I can't speak to that right now, I was not aware of that, I didn't know there was a plan going on, so I'll have to look into that and get back to you.
Yeah, because there, people are having to drive through the grass now.
Okay, we'll look.
But the problem is, those alleyways were not built for the waste trucks that we have now. That's really torn up that concrete.
There's a, there's not, it's not all through benchmark, right?
No.
It's just a couple back in the back?
Right.
If I remember, yeah, there's some.
Where that O loop is, or a ring in the back left there, before that, that's, it's just that one stretch there is the only.
We can, we can look into that and see what needs to be done with it, I'm just not.
I appreciate that.
Not aware of those.
We've done some patchwork in the alleyways in the past, I know Mr. Short oversaw when Representative Morrison called about.
I think they only lasted about 18 months, though.
It's concrete, isn't it?
It's, it's concrete, but it was probably three-inch-thick or four-inch-thick concrete, minor, you know, not really rebar, but with steel mesh, maybe.
Little mesh, a bull wire.
It's okay for residential driveway, but not for the trash, trash trucks.
That, that's what I was going to say, having never been part of this discussion before, what about picking up the trash at the front of the houses instead of going through the alleys? If they're not built for it, and.
That's a problem.
That's a dearly sad question.